Called a order, Town of Prescott Valley, regular council meeting, June 27, 2019. Welcome, everyone. Tonight's invocation will be done by Father Volmer, St. Germain Catholic Church. Father, will you please come on down?
I do not see him.
Do we not see him? All right. Well, everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public works, my nation under God, visible with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Sure. Mayor Kelpaguda?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Glad to be here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Absent.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. We're going to start off tonight with presentation. The man really needs no introduction, but he's going to probably get one and get some good words, so Mr. Bruce Hanley, come on down.
Mayor, I'll get this started, council. As you know, this man here doesn't need any introduction, but Bruce Hanley, he came to me here a week ago and said, "You don't know him? It's time." I said, "Well, what do you mean, Bruce? I mean, we've been here a long time," and he says, "You know, I just need to do something different." And I said, "Well, are you unhappy, Bruce?" He's leaving Public Works after 30 years. I think, councilman, we recall Bruce got his 30-year award in February. And, you know, we talked for a while when he came in and says, "You know, I've got some plans." And I said, "Well, can I do anything for you here?" Bruce, and he says, "You know, I do have some plans." And Bruce wants to move on with bigger and better things, so we got to let him fly, so to speak. You know, so we're real careful. You look at the flyer we got made up. You know, this is a farewell to Bruce. It doesn't say retirement. It's not that. It is a farewell, because I know Bruce is moving on to other things and wanted to be careful to say, you know, this is a farewell. Bruce is going to do some other things locally. He wants to start his own trucking business, he indicates to me. Hell of a good driver, hell of an operator, and even better mechanic. You know, one thing I knew that Bruce wasn't retiring, because right after he gave him his 30-year service reward in February, we had the mega snowstorm we haven't seen in probably 50 years. We were running 24-hour shifts, you know, basically working five to five. So I had the 5:00 a.m. shift. I'd come in at 5:00 in the morning and work till 5:00 at night. Well, I came in about second or third day, there's Bruce again coming in. He's been working all night, putting together some tired equipment, working every bit as hard as anyone there. And I said, "You know, this is a 30-year man that's working every bit as hard." And that was telling to me that, you know, Bruce has got everything he wants to do, and he continues to work hard for the Public Works Department. And I want to thank you, Bruce, too, for enhancing my knowledge about Public Works. I came here 15 years ago, and you've taught me a heck of a lot about equipment, and there's a lot of things that you do that I don't really know how to do them. And you've always helped and been courteous in that, and you've been a heck of a team member all this time, and you're really looked upon. You're the, you know, a core of the group. You know, one thing I wanted to answer to, when an employee leaves, we have a form that we fill out, you know, the human resources paperwork to, you know, process. You know, there's a comment there about, you know, comments on employee performance, and they give you a line. And I said to myself, "I'm filling out the form," and I just stopped. I got writer's block. I said, "How do you comment on employees' performance on a line?" I wanted to write three pages about Bruce and could have easily done it, so I put it away. And I said, "I'm going to come back to having to synopsize that in one line, because I want to do that honor to Bruce." So rather than write three pages, I could go three pages tonight of all the things Bruce has done in 30 years here. He's been a part of just about everything in Public Works. And I summed up pretty simply, he's the heart of the Public Works team. Everyone looks up to Bruce, so I hope I did you honor there, Bruce, to say, "That's my comments on your employee performance all these 30 years." So I think, anybody else want to come up, add a note?
(laughing) It begins.
Well, as most people know, I don't have, I'm not relegated to public speaking or a man of very few words, but I know, I know when I started at the town, I came over as an inspector, and then I moved down the streets, and Bruce has always been one of the men I could count on to do whatever it takes to get the job done. He's one of the damn best loader operators I've ever seen. I remember the first time we were moving dirt down at Mountain Valley Park, and he was taking a loader with about half the tire hanging off the edge of the pile every time filling up trucks, and I was like, "Man, that guy's got some cojones," but I just, you know, they just don't make people like Bruce anymore. He's a seer and very, he comes across a little grumpy sometimes, but he's got a harder gold, and if he tells you he's going to do something, he does it. So I'm going to miss him, and he was supposed to stay until I retired, but he's leaving early, so I'm going to miss you, Bruce, and I wish all the best for you, man.
We've got to make him cry before he leave. No.
Anyone else you guys?
Who's going to take the picture after this?
No.
I'll send it to him.
You have to stand in the background.
Don't throw us back out.
(inaudible)
Stay right here, stay in here, go.
We'll have council say a few words.
(inaudible)
Where?
Right here.
(audience laughing)
Councilman Schumacher?
I just think that 30 years' service is just an amazing thing in this day, and so we just want to say thank you so much for your dedication, and you can tell how much your crew has loved you. So that's an amazing thing, right there.
Bruce, I want to thank you for everything you've given to the town. You're certainly an inspiration to the rest of us, so good luck in everything you do.
Bruce, it's Laura Lee. How many of these guys have you shaped up? How many of them have you helped educate? How many of them have you inspired?
(laughing)
There we go. Thanks, guys.[943.20][943.20](laughing) You probably thought you're off there all by yourselves, but you're an inspiration to all of us, and I'm talking about all of you now, especially Bruce. We're so proud of you and your department, and this is bittersweet, Bruce, but we care about you, so we're happy for you.
Well, Bruce, 30 years. So I look at you as like the foundation of this town. That's what I see you as. We just celebrated 40-year birthday, and I want to thank you for helping to build the best town around. God bless you and your new adventures.
Now, 30 years, long time. What are you going to do in your spare time now?[995.62][995.62](laughing) Anyway, congratulations. 30 years is good. I hope you get a good retirement out of this, too, sir.
Bruce, you're older than dirt, and you know it, and, you know...
Some of it, too.
Well, exactly. But you need to share with the group some of your stories from back in the old days, back when all of our roads were nothing but dirt, and some of the... I could share a number of stories, but I don't know... We ought not do that.[1037.62][1037.62](laughing) It's been a lot of fun. And whenever you needed something or you got into a bind, you could call Bruce and you'd figure out some way to get you out. And I remember down when we had a pit, and we had a bulldozer that was stuck, and there was a whole lot of work that was required to get that thing out. That's just one of many stories that could be shared. And Bruce, it's been a great time and very productive, and you've been essential in helping grow this community.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Bruce, there's not much more I can say, but truly, you are a true icon, and if we had our own Prescott Valley version of Mount Rushmore up there on Glassford Hill, you by far would be the first, be the first face up there. So congratulations, sir. You are amazing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bruce, so we'll leave you with this service plaque. It says, "Bruce Hanley, thank for 30 years of excellent service," to say the least, "to the Public Works Department. Congratulations on your retirement. Bruce, and I hope, I know if you go into the trucking business, you always got a free pass here, and I hope you give us that honk when you drive by. It'd be always good to see you. I know you're not going far. Congratulations, Bruce."
(applause)
Oh, he is going to...
I just want to say thank you.
We'll still do it.
You know, we've done... Smartass. Slap that one. We've done, you know, me and Larry were talking, all the, when I started, town was dirt. I look around now, what we've done, pretty awesome.
It is awesome.
So, but I thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bruce.
God bless you.
We thank you.
(inaudible)
Starting down on the end with Councilwoman Schumacher.
None at this time.
Have any comment? Well, I don't have to tell anybody that we're closing in on the Fourth of July, but when I'm out and about, I see all kind of fireworks, and we know how dry we are. So I want to ask everybody to be super thoughtful, super careful. We don't want to burn anything in the town while you think you're having fun, so I'm asking all those citizens to be careful and cautious.
Great. Councilman?
No, sir. I'm good.
Councilman Packard?
Done.
The only thing I have to add is, June is usually our month for selection of a new vice mayor, and obviously, this is the end of June, and just due to some uncertainties that may or may not be coming up, we're just going to postpone that for just maybe another council meeting or two. So if anyone, I don't know if anyone was out there had any questions about that, but that's what we'll be doing. So we'll talk a little bit more next time on that. With that being said, we'll move on to item seven, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, you've had a chance to review the consent agenda. Are there any items or letters that we'd like to remove at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda by electronic vote. I'd like to second it.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call the vote. Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumb Packard?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on to item eight, new business. It's going to be consideration of reappointing Andrew Sinclair to the Arts and Culture Commission. Vice Mayor, you may have something on this?
I do. Andy, you come right on up here. While Andy's coming up, I'll give you the details. On June 30, 2019, Andrew Sinclair's term on the Arts and Culture Commission will come due for renewal. He did submit the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Here's where I get to go, "Hurrah!" Mr. Sinclair was first appointed to an existing term on May 26, 2016. This reappointment will be his second consecutive term. Myself, Councilmembers Anderson and Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Andrew Sinclair for a term for a renewal date of June 30, 2022. And boy, do I like the sound of that. What do you have to say for yourself, Andy?
Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity. It's been fun. I look forward to continuing the fun.
Well, we humbly thank you. I try to get every event that I'm physically here in Prescott Valley, and I always run into you. You are doing your job and setting an example, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Motion to reappoint Andrew Sinclair to the Arts and Culture Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2022 by electronic vote.
I'd like to second that.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call the vote. We're all offline.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Kelpaguda?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Item B, consideration of reappointing Lindsay Quisenberry to the Arts and Culture Commission. Vice Mayor?
Come on down.
Hi.
Hi.
How is everybody today?
You'll get your turn. On June 30, 2019, officially, Lindsay Quisenberry's term on the Arts and Culture Commission will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? Yeah. Ms. Quisenberry was first appointed to an existing partial term on August 9, 2018. This reappointment will be her second consecutive term. And again, myself and Councilmen Grossman and Anderson are highly recommending the reappointment of Lindsay Quisenberry for a term with a renewal date of the year 2022, and that's actually June 30 of 2022. So share a little bit about why you're going to stick it out with us, and then we'll vote and see if you get to.
Oh, gosh, the pressure. You know, I think what I've really enjoyed most about my commission, aside from getting to know some wonderful people, unique, each one of them, I've learned so much, I've gotten to make a positive impact consistently. It's been, I mean, I filled a vacant term, so it wasn't, you know, the full two years, but I was really worried that when it came up to the end, I was going to be like, "No, that's okay." And it turned into just a few hours a month, and it fills my cup up. I love it, and I look forward to continuing another term.
So I just have a comment. So you and I have had a third Tuesday of every month date for the last six months on the radio.
Yes, sir.
And I never knew your name was Lindsay.[1593.82][1593.82](laughing) I always knew you as Link, and then all of a sudden, you throw a curveball and come up here, and I just think that's amazing.
We actually have another broadcaster in the house named Lindsay, and she broadcasts under that name, and so we picked out a new one.
Fair enough.
We mostly call you Link.
Yes.
Just so you know.
Most of the adults call me Link.
Absolutely, and your kids are here?
Yes. I have both of my children. I have a tiny Roxanne over there and the very tall Alexis. Next to them is Steve. They are my support system, and they allow me to do all of the extra volunteer work that I so choose.
So ladies, your mom is amazing, and we are happy to have her on board, so...
Yeah, my generation calls her a keeper.
Ooh. Well, you did hand-select me for this. We talked about it for months and months and months, and you convinced me.
And I showed the application in your hand.
Physically, yeah. Super worth it.
Time to vote.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. A motion to reappoint Lindsay Quisenberry to the Arts and Cultures Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2022.
I'll second that.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call it.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Kelpaguda?
Yes, ma'am.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here.
See you soon.
All right, we're up to number C, consideration of reappointing Lori Hunt to the Parks and Rec Commission. Councilman Anderson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, and it's my pleasure to read this one. On June 30, 2019, Lori Hunt's term on the Parks and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Ms. Hunt was first appointed to an existing partial term on April 11, 2019. This reappointment will be her second consecutive term. Vice Mayor Nye, myself, and Councilman Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Lori Hunt for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2022. And welcome.
Thank you.
Say a few words, ma'am?
So I had a short two-month term so far, and it's been a blast. I'm really excited about the master plan, and I love this city. And if I could just say one more thing, thank you very much for approving item J on consent, which was our half amendment to our beer garden license. I really appreciate it. I want to thank Larry and the fabulous Fatima, because they were a big help this week when we decided to amend it. So thank you, everybody. I'm really excited to be part of this city.
Well, we want to thank you for having had a little taste and that you want a big bite now.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would like to make another motion. A motion to reappoint Lori Hunt to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2022.
I'll be happy to second.
Clerk, we have a motion. Clerk, we have a motion and a second, please call the vote. Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Definitely.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to item D, Consideration of Reappointment, Mr. Ron Brinkman to the Parks and Rec Commission. Councilman Anderson?
Yes. On June 30th, 2019, Ron Brinkman's term on the Parks and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. Ron submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Mr. Brinkman was first appointed to an existing partial term on July 9th, 2009. This reappointment will be his fifth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Nye, myself, and Councilman Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Ron Brinkman for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2022. And I personally want to thank you, Ron, for your 10 years of service and your willingness to continue.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something, sir?
I just want to say, you know, I wouldn't want to miss the excitement of developing a new master plan. When I came on the commission, we were going through this recession thing. So there wasn't any money to really do much. So it's kind of a different world now, and hopefully, we'll get the whole town involved, and everybody will be able to contribute, and we'll come up with a plan that'll be good and look forward for 10 years.
Great, sir. And 10 years, it's impressive for any board, any job, so thank you for that.
I think that deserves a motion, which I will make. Motion to reappoint Ron Brinkman to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2022 by voice vote. What, we got everybody coming, sticking in till 2022?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Clerk, please call the vote. See? We're in.
Oh, it's up.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Nice job on getting us going. Item E, Consideration of Reappointing Mary Jo Dean to the Library Board of Trustees. Ma'am, come on down. Vice Mayor?
Hi there. On June 30th, 2019, Mary Jo Dean, term on the Library Board of Trustees will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. She was first appointed to the partial term on November 16th, 2017. This reappointment will be her second consecutive term. I want to make a point of that. Myself, Councilmen Anderson and Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Mary Jo Dean for the term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2022. Share with us why you're willing to go a third time.
Good evening, everybody. It is certainly my opportunity to serve this town, especially in the library. This library goes way above and beyond anything I've seen. I've had a lot of experience with libraries, and we have a wonderful one here, not only with the board, but the staff who I work with, and I'd be honored to serve again.
Excellent, ma'am. Thank you for stepping up.
So now we need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mary Jo Dean to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2022.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item F, Public Hearing, Consideration of Adopting Fiscal Year 19 and 20 Final Expenditure Limitation and Budget for the Town. Ms. Katie, I believe you're coming up.
Mayor, counsel, just as a leadoff on that, tonight's a very important night, as you all know. This is, tonight's action, if you elect to adopt the budget, is the culmination of an effort that started late October, early November, with our first retreat, a series of open houses that were conducted, a second retreat where council gave staff very clear direction on what they wanted to see accomplished over the next fiscal year, and then very hard work by all of the various departments and department heads going ahead and building the budget from scratch and building it up from there. But very importantly, was the effort of Lisa Simrek and Irina Urmikova and Katie Pell, where they pulled it all together. And the documents that you've seen is all of the hard work they've done, and we really do believe that it's going to be another award-winning budget presentation, as well as one that, as you have seen in all of the meetings that we've had in the past, a very fiscally responsible budget and very conservative, as we have been known for putting together conservative budgets. During that, we continue to pay down our PSPRS debt, in other words, our public safety retirement debt. We continue to pay that down. We're on a track to have that paid off without going ahead and asking for an increase in taxes in the community to go ahead and buy that down. In addition to that, we are continuing to build the community through extensive capital improvements in the Public Works Department. And this year, as we have said before, is the year of water resources. We're building more water tanks, drilling more water wells, and spending a significant amount of money going ahead and making sure that our water resources will carry us well beyond the near-term horizon. And so with all of that, I turn it over to Katie, and we thank you for the direction that we have received from you all.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. As Larry said, we've already been before you several times to discuss this, and this is just the opportunity for the public to give their input on the budget as well. The total budget that we have for the town is $103,681,937. And unless you have any other questions from me at this time, I can allow you to open it for public hearing.
No, ma'am, you're fine right there. At this time, open it up for public discussion. Any comments from the public at this time? At this time, we'll close it. We will now move on. Item G, Consideration of Authorizing the Mayor or in His Absence, Vice Mayor, to Sign Resolution Number 2090, Adopting Fiscal Year 19-20 Final Expenditure Limitation and Budget for the Town. Ms. Pell?
And this is the official budget forms and resolution that would adopt those budget forms that we send off to the Auditor General every year that actually sets our expenditure limitation for the budget as presented previously to you all. I do have the prior presentation if anyone's interested or has any questions. Otherwise, I'll leave that up to you all.
The presentation that Katie has put together, you have seen before, and it runs about an hour and a half in terms of length, goes into a great amount of detail. You have seen it before. The citizens have seen it before. It's on the website. And so if you wanted to go forward and take an action on this without going through that pain again, that would be understandable.
Then I immediately choose to make a motion with the mayor's permission.
Yes, ma'am.
As much as I like it, I'll pass. But morally, I have a way.
Okay. Motion to authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2090, adopting the fiscal year 2019-20 final expenditure limitation and budget for the town of Prescott Valley by electronic vote.
Can I have a second?
And I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Pell, nicely done.
Mayor, this makes us all budget survivors.
It truly does. You're absolutely correct. With that being said, we're going to move on to item H, Consideration of Authorizing the Mayor or in His Absence, Vice Mayor, to Sign Resolution Number 2095, Approving Policy to Authorize the Purchase of Supplies and Services from Council Members in Fiscal Year 19-20. Ma'am?
With this action, every year, the Arizona revised statutes of state law requires us to bring before council the ability to purchase from council members certain goods and services. This is limited to an amount of $1,000 per fiscal year, but every year, we do have to bring this before you, and we have for numerous years. Are there any questions on this?
I believe the amounts stayed the same for many years.
Mayor, I have to recuse myself from this.
Yes, sir. With that being said, no other questions from council? And clerk, you have Councilman Anderson recusing himself? Can we get a motion?
May I make a motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution 2095?
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Pell. Item I, Public Hearing, Consideration of a Minor Amendment to General Plan 2025, GPA 019-001, Northern Arizona Heating and Air. Sir?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this, the subject property here, Lot 64, is currently designated medium-high-density residential in the general plan with a zoning designation of R2. It's vacant and located in the FEMA floodplain. Shown here in this exhibit, most of all, the nearby portion of Unit 16 is somebody's zone R2 and is undeveloped because of the impacts of the FEMA floodplain that does not allow development in the floodplain. Lots 6457, 6458, immediately adjacent to this lot to the south.
Thank you.
Are zoned, thank you, are zoned commercial, minor industrial, and are not in the floodplain and contain existing commercial building and parking for existing business. The applicant also requests a zoning map change from R2-4 to a P1 parking for the subject lot to develop a parking lot in conjunction with the adjacent commercial use. The Planning Zoning Commission and Town Council have historically supported the P1 parking for lots that are used in conjunction, floodplain that are used in conjunction with a adjacent primary commercial use. The Planning Zoning Commission considered GPA 1901 along with ZMC 1905 at a public hearing on June 10th, 2019, voted unanimously to recommend approval. Again, so I'd like to say this is, would be background for the public hearing and also background for the following, a new business item, and could be considered background for the next item, K and L for the zoning map change. But I'd be willing to come back up if there's any questions on any of those other matters. I don't think the applicant's here, but I'm available for any questions.
No, sir. You have a question?
No, sir.
With that being said, we're going to open it up for public hearing at this time. Any comments from the public? No comments from the public, we'll close it. We're moving on to item J. Consideration of Authorizing the Mayor or in His Absence, Vice Mayor, to Sign Resolution Number 2099, Approving GPA 19-001, NAH and A, and sign any agreement under Proposition 207.
Need a motion?
We have no one presenting on that. Go to a motion. Can I just get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2099, Approving GPA 19-001, and to sign any agreement under Proposition 207.
Can I have a second? Thank you. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item K, Public Hearing, Consideration of Zoning Map Change, ZMC 19-005, NAH and A.
Speaker, counsel, yes, I, that is a zoning map change proposed from R2-4 zoning to the P1 parking on subject Lot 6456, again, to develop parking in conjunction with the adjacent commercial use. You previously recommended approval of a general plan amendment, which would allow for this zoning designation, so we recommend support. And if there's any other questions available?
No, sir. Open this up to public hearing. With no comments, we'll close public hearing. Move on to item L. Consideration of Reading Ordinance Number 864 by Title Only on Two Separate Occasions and Placing Same on Final Passage Approving Zoning Map Change, ZMC 19-005 for NAH and A. Looking for a motion, please.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to read. Yes.
I'm sorry. Your second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, clerk, please call the vote. Thank you.
Yeah, I read a motion. To read the item.
Clerk will be reading the first reading.
That passes, Mayor, so I'll go ahead and read.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 19-005, by changing the zoning classification of Lot 6456, Unit 16, from R2-3 residential multiple dwelling units to P1 parking, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item M, Another Public Hearing, Zoning Map Change, ZMC 19-002, TTH Investments. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, it's a request by TTH Investments for a zoning map change from R2-2 to RS on subject lots 27, 28, and Prescott Country Club, Unit 1, as illustrated here on the map. The current R2 zoning would allow, well, the property was previously annexed in the town by Town Council with adoption of ordinance 860 on March 14th, 2019, because the applicant also owns an adjacent property in which to connect to the town's sewer system, as indicated on the exhibit. The current R2 zoning would allow for daycare operation up to 10 or fewer students, children, but facility with more than 10 children, as proposed, requires the RS zoning. Lots 25 and 26, formerly the church parking, are already zoned RS. The exhibit here indicates similar RS zoning along the east side of Old Chisholm Trail, extending to the Country Club Boulevard. There are 10 lots, again, and in the purple color, which are zoned similar RS, which is being requested. The proposed daycare facility is initially planned for 40 children and could have a capacity of 59 with the 45 employees included. A traffic statement was prepared as part of the application by a registered professional and provided to the commission. Traffic estimates were 241 daily vehicle trips for the maximum of 59 students, inclusive of parents and teachers, with 46 AM peak hour trips and 47 PM peak hour trips. If their enrollment remain at 40 students, 164 daily trips would be involved. The statement concluded that even with the additional trips generated from inside and outside the community, the adjacent roadways and intersections would continue to operate at acceptable level of service. Yarra Bay County did review the traffic statement, and their only issue was to better define the driveways. Neighborhood meetings were held March 5th, and all property owners notified within a thousand foot. It was reported that seven persons attended, and a summary of the meetings provided to the Planning Zoning Commission, along with some correspondence from the neighbors. The application was held at a public hearing of Planning Zoning Commission on May 13th. At that time, concerns were raised by representatives of the county. At that time, concerns were raised by representatives of the Prescott Country Club Homeowners Association, as well as some neighbors. One concern was for increased screening of the play area, and other concerns were brought up about outdoor lighting and traffic. Also, there's a discussion about proposal that might lead to other commercial uses. At the time, the commission unanimously voted to table consideration of the application to give the developer time to refine the request and address concerns that were expressed by neighbors. The application was again considered by the commission at the June 10, 2019 meeting. At that time, a more detailed site plan was developed, showing the required parking that is all in Lot 26, which includes one way in, one way out driveways, which allows for vehicle stacking and to reduce conflicts in Old Chisholm Trail. The plan also indicated the required buffering, screen, and landscaping of the parking area from residential lots on Old Chisholm Trail. Under town code RS, the town code for the RS district, any lighting on buildings or on the site will be fully shielded and dark sky compliant. Again, following the first meeting, the applicant agreed at their request to replace the four-foot chain link fence with the six-foot block wall to help mitigate noise and also provide privacy for the students. With regard to noise, applicant has noted playtimes are limited, and there's already significant noise from local roads, State Route 69, and the nearby restaurant. At the May 13 hearing, it was explained that other businesses along Old Chisholm Trail within Yarapai County have RS zoning, which allows similar uses, and that any properties annexed in the future would initially receive the same RS zoning as existed in the county. The rezoning request may be conditioned to remove some of the uses that could otherwise be available in the new zoning designation. In this case, staff recommended that personal services, professional service, and office uses allowed in the RS district will be allowed, but not retail sales, which is excluded by the zoning ordinance. Lot 29, which had previously been included, was withdrawn from the early request and remain R2, providing additional 80-foot separation buffer from the nearest residential use. The conclusion of the June 10 hearing, Planning Zone Commission voted unanimously to forward the recommendation of approval of ZMC 19002 to Town Council. And with that, I'm available for any questions. I don't.
Any questions from council? Sir, thank you. At this time, open it up for public comment. Doesn't look like we have any public comment. We'll be closing the public hearing. Moving on to item N, as in Nancy, consideration of reading ordinance number 865 by title only on two separate occasions, then placing same on final passage approving zoning map, ZMC 19-002 TDH Investments LLC. Mr. Scott could, of course, recap his presentation. We have no other comments. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance number 865 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage, or motion not to read ordinance number 865. And I'll second that, Mayor.
Clerk, will you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 19-002, by changing the zoning classification of lots 2728, Prescott Country Club Unit 1, located on the northeast corner of Old Chisholm Trail and Noravian Lane, from R2-2 residential multiple dwelling units to RS residential and services zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item O, consideration of approving order agreement for Exela Civic platform software. Sir, you are a popular person tonight.
Everybody's gone on vacation or otherwise. Glad to fill in. Again, this is kind of Richard Vicki's project, but with our department. But again, you did have an RFCA report on the update of the Permits Plus Software, which it stated has been used for many years. I recall it being in place since probably the time I got here, so that's been a while. Again, the RFCA explains that the self-hosted platform is preferred for licensing purposes, and that explains the cost for the fiscal year 19 and 20, and the proposed kickoff date is July of this year. And I don't have more details than what's in the RFCA, but hopefully that gives you enough information to.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from council? If not, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve the Exela order agreement as proposed.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item P, consideration of approving consultant service agreement with IK Consulting for Exela Civic Platform Software System in the amount of $487,515. Sir?
Again, the RFCA explains that IK Consulting has serviced the community development department and the current permit system since its inception, and that they've developed a lot of custom programs, reports, and the department wants to continue working with them. And the RFCA explains the cost and timeframe, and hopefully that gives you information to decide.
Thank you, sir. No other comments or questions from council? Can I have a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve the proposed consulting service agreement with IK Consulting for $487,515 by electronic vote.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item Q, consideration of bids submitted for Boys and Girls Parking Lot Renovation, CIP Number 455, and recommendation to reject all bids. Mr. Woody?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, this particular project, all of our six bids that were received after advertising both May 26 and June 2, have exceeded our budgetary limitations on the project. So staff is recommending that all submitted bids be rejected, the project modified with other means of renovation, better to sue to our budget for this project.
I see there's a wide range of the amounts in there.
It's that.
Are you confident we're going to be close on the next?
I do.
Yes? Excellent. With that being said, any other questions from council?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Motion to reject all bids submitted for the Boys and Girls Parking Lot Renovation, CIP Number 455.
I'll second.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item R. Thank you, Mr. Woody. Consideration of approving amendment number one to professional service agreement with Civil Tech Engineering in the amount of $26,400 for Little Pete and Antelope Park Well Site Design Project, CIP Number W442. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor and council. So what you have in front of you is a proposed amendment to the Civil Tech Professional Services Agreement for the two wells, and we actually talked about those wells a little bit at the council meeting last week. And so, you know, the amount is $26,400. And primarily, these changes were made because, you know, we were trying to push these projects through as quickly as possible, and we moved forward and moved the consultants very, very quickly. And we were making decisions on the fly, things that affected the design and so forth. And so we changed directions a couple times, but we got the project done very quickly. And so this change order basically addresses the changes that we made during the design work. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions? No questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering in the amount of $26,400 for the Little Pete and Antelope Park Well Site Design Project, CIP Number W442.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Moving on to item S, consideration of approving awards of construction contract to lowest responsive bidder, Kensington Construction, in the amount of $112,296 for project CIP Number W433.2, Juniper Silt Dams, on behalf of Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. Mr. Munderlo?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We've briefly addressed this project before, and it's been kind of a heavy lift for such a small project. Very simple project, but it hasn't been done before, so there's some confusion and difficulty in getting things launched. Simply, we're taking that tree and putting it in that wash in a fashion where it'll be locked in for the next flood. We're doing that at several locations. The project is being conducted on state land, so we're still awaiting permits from State Land Department. We won't give a notice to proceed for this bid until that is received. Do have a change from the motion, though. Staff, because of budgeting issues or budgeting constraints, are trying to stay within the amount of the grant. We are actually recommending that the award be for the base bid amount on the lowest responsive bid. Again, that's Kensington Construction. The amount is $83,563. Going over that would push us into potentially a dangerous zone within our grant allotment. So we want to stay within that. So we'd suggest that the motion be to approve the construction contract in the amount of $83,563.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I make a motion. Motion to award the lowest responsive bidder, Kensington Construction, in the amount of $83,563, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, for project CIP Number W433.2, Juniper Silt Dams, on behalf of the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition.
I'll second.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, can we please call the vote?
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Munderlo. Moving on, item nine, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town managers to review this matter, or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. At this time, I believe we do have someone, at least one person, sir? And I believe you've handed us something prior to council. Please just state your name.
My name is James Henrickson. I live at 4,000 North Prescott in, or Pembroke in Granville. And I was here approximately seven, eight weeks ago with regards to the same thing. At that time, I'd commented that in October, we had turned in a petition with the names of 89 residents of Granville whose homes back up to Prescott East Highway and Granville Fairway with regards to the truck traffic that is now using those roads. That has not ceased. If you will read through this, I found interesting with a help of Mr. Tyrokowski, traffic count on a Wednesday in May, 5,142 vehicles entering and leaving Granville at that point. They come to the stop sign at Granville Fairway, so there's the squeaking of the brakes, the acceleration noises. A week ago on Monday, in the hour between 7:00 and 8:30, there were 38 gravel trucks coming and going. I followed them. They start out at the gravel pit at the end of Glassford Hill Road on the other side of 69. They come up to Route 69, take a left, they turn onto Prescott East Highway. They come the full length of Prescott East Highway, down to Granville Fairway, then from there, down to Santa Fe Loop. At that point, on that Monday, all of those trucks were going into the Jasper subdivision to drop loads of gravel, and then turn around, they followed the same route back. I did speak with the manager of that company at that point. He was hopeful that he could do something about it. And in fact, that company, Earth Resources, has not been sending many trucks through that way. But there are now many other trucking companies and concrete companies that are now using that access. When we first moved to Granville, we were given a disclosure that entrance roads to the subdivision were primarily Santa Fe Loop and Granville Parkway. Nothing was said about Prescott East Highway. It has since become a major route for the traffic of these construction vehicles. I called the construction supervisor of the Jasper project. His comment was, "I don't know what I can do." He said, "I will speak to our delivery people and see if there is something that they can do." But he said, "I think you just picked the wrong lot to purchase." He said, "These are public roads, and we can use them as we see fit." I just don't think that's fair to the neighbors. And just to give you an idea, if you were sitting on my patio, those trucks would be traveling just outside that window. And that is just terribly disturbing, both morning and afternoon. The only respite that we get are Saturday and Sunday. So I just don't know what else can be done, but I would hope that something could be done to mitigate the construction traffic on those roads. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. I believe Mr. Tyrokowski might have something to add to this.
Mayor and council, the town did go ahead and have a study of 24-hour count, and the truck traffic on that given day, on that Wednesday, quite frankly, was very low. And there may be events happening in either Granville or Jasper, meaning the day that they're doing substantial paving, or the day that they're doing substantial subgrade application. I have directed our inspectors to be talking to the gravel pits to get voluntary compliance, to route onto Glassford Hill Road rather than going through the neighborhood. And so we're working to see if we can get some voluntary compliance. The other thing is that as far as the buildout of Jasper, that predominantly is going to happen on the extension of Stone Ridge Drive, which is triggered at the beginning of Phase Two. So all of that construction traffic will have that as an option rather than going through the Granville neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for coming in front of us, sir.
I appreciate it, and whatever can be done, our neighbors would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
One more quick thing. Our next door neighbor just sold their house for the reason that the noise was too loud, and they did have to list that as a disclosure. And it turned out, the people that they sold to were hard of hearing, and they said, "Noise didn't bother them." So they lucked out.
Match made in heaven right there.
Right. But not everybody's going to be so lucky.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? With that being said, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.